A call a meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of Garden City Planning Commission. This is the online version. Thursday, January fourteenth, twenty twenty at about six forty-five. To start our regular meeting, I'd like to ask everybody to join me in pledging allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands.
Stands one nation.
One nation. Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice.
And justice. Thank you. Brian, roll call please.
Chairperson may.
Here.
Commissioner Steenberg. Commissioner Turnbull.
Here.
Commissioner Walls. Commissioner Kalitas.
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Mativier.
Here.
Okay, moving on, we need approval of the agenda. Need a motion?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
Motion's made and supported to approve the agenda. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Secretary, roll please.
Commissioner Mativier.
Hi.
Commissioner Kalitas.
Hi.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Hi.
Chairperson may.
Hi. Next item is approval of minutes from the regular meeting of December tenth, twenty twenty.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from December tenth, twenty twenty.
Support.
Motion's made and supported. Any discussion, questions? Comments? Hearing none, we will take the roll please.
Commissioner Kalitas.
Hi.
Commissioner Mativier.
Hi.
Commissioner Turnbull. Chairperson may.
Hi. Next item is public comments on non-agenda items only. Do we have any? One wishing to make a comment on an item not on the agenda, would you please indicate to our secretary if you do?
I.
See any?
Nope, I don't see any hands.
Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the business items. First item. Is a public hearing on proposed amendment language regarding residential design standards, mobile home art terminology and certificate of occupancy regulations. To get us started, Mr. Ortega, would you give us your report, please?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Tonight is culmination of some work that Planning Commission has done over the past several months with regards to first, the residential design standards. The amendments tonight are intended to provide more specific requirements to ensure that any newly constructed residential design, residential house, single-family home or structure will be compatible with the design and of character of the existing homes in Garden City. Mainly it's to make sure that any new structures are going to have the quality and represent the investment that existing residents have already ready made in their homes. So specifically, we've gone through, eliminated some of the language that and clarified it with regards to manufactured homes and modular homes to distinguish between those two. And then we also increase specifically things like in paragraph seven, the compatibility with the adjacent residences to make sure the architecture design is reflective of the adjacent homes within a thousand feet. And in regard in having specific requirements such as exterior materials utilized for homes will have at least a mixture of two different types of materials. And then later on, we create new language which requires certain items typically found in Garden City homes, such as the fact that a garage must be provided, that a front porch, not a deck, but a porch should be provided. There should be landscaping requirements as well.
Okay. Well, we can open the hearing to the general public. If anyone has any comments to make, please understand that these are your comments only. It's not a question and answer period with the commission. So if anyone wishes to speak on this, would you indicate so? Raise your hand. Secretary, see anyone?
I don't see any hands. Nope, still no hands.
Okay, I'll ask again if anyone wishes to speak on these changes. Please indicate so by showing your hand. Still none?
Still none.
Okay, then we'll move on from the public comments. Do you have any written comments?
My office did not receive any written communications.
All right, then. We'll close the public hearing at six fifty-two. And move on to the commission discussion and recommendations. Is there any comments or discussion of proposed changes?
I have none.
Have nothing?
Nothing.
Okay, I think you know, the proposed changes in the requirements are fairly straightforward and simple and will only serve to improve the appearance of newly constructed homes. And the language changes for modular and mobile homes, I think, will clarify those two types of structures and bring the the language up to modern terminology. So if someone would care to make a motion to make a recommendation to city council for these, for this amendment?
Motion to to send these amendments up to city council for approval?
Support.
For approval, you say?
I think it is.
Is there support?
Support.
Okay, motions made and supported to recommend approval of these ordinance changes to city council. Any comments on the motion? Discussion? Hearing none. Would secretary take the roll, please?
Commissioner Turnbull?
Hi.
Commissioner Kalitas?
Hi.
Commissioner Mativier?
Hi.
Chairperson may.
Hi. Okay, next item. We have another public hearing, which is the request for rezoning of sixty-one twelve Merriman Road on R three multiple family residential and thirty-one four thirty block street from our one single-family residential to HS historic Structures and Sites District. With the with our consultant, Mr. Ortega.
Yes, good evening, everyone. So this rezoning is regards to what's known throughout the city as the Oddfellows Hall, located at the corner of Merriman and Block Street. Currently, the site, it's the part of the building is located on in all the parcels that are fronting on Merriman are actually zoned R three multifamily residential. In addition, the rezoning involves three-one. Trying to get the number right. Three-one-three-four-one-three-zero Block Street, which is, which was a residential home in the past, but has now been converted into a parking lot for the Oddfellows Hall, and that site is zoned R one. The proposal is to rezone this to HS, which is our Historic Structures and Sites District. This, if you recall, originally in this ordinance in the city was strictly a district for the Straight Farmhouse. However, in an effort to preserve other sites and structures in the city, we've we've created this broader district that's intended to do just that, preserve those buildings and those sites that have contributed to the history of the city. So the site where before us is currently involves a total of approximately one acre. So when we consider rezoning, the first thing we do is look at the master plan and look at whether the proposed zoning, proposed amendment or the rezoning be in accordance with the basic tenants and purpose of the zoning ordinance. You know, the requested rezoning would be permit a very limited range of uses that are intended to preserve historic structures in the city. And plus, this site's location along Merriman Road is appropriate for any park or recreation activities that could incur in the future because Merriman Road provides very easy access and amount of traffic volume to serve the site. And also, it would minimize the need for any traffic to travel through any adjacent residential neighborhoods. People could utilize Merriman Road most more likely. So this is in accordance with our tenants and purpose of our zoning ordinance to properly locate uses within the city. In addition to that standard of the zoning ordinance, we look at the master plan, actually. And specifically with regards to master plan, one of the goals is that the city create access to top-notch community resources. This goal is achieved by attaining the objective of expanding our existing recreational facilities and the opportunities we have in the city. So by rezoning this site to HS, this designation that while not technically legally a historic district, it is on its way to to be by establishing that the Oddfellows Hall has contributed to the history of the city. It's a local designation that is more of a matter of recognition, of local recognition. In addition, establishing this site as a historic site in the area would be compatible of future adjacent residential uses. The parks and historic sites are typically found in residential areas. And this is evidenced by the fact that all our parks in city and various historic sites are found throughout the city and usually in residential areas. Especially, for example, the Straight Farmhouse is a perfect example. It's located directly north of the site and is surrounded by single-family homes. And they and has existed peacefully and in harmony with those adjacent uses. So the establishment of this would, as a HS site, would further the comprehensive planning goals of the city. Finally, other questions we ask as we consider this rezoning. If this is amendment would send inappropriate precedent or result in the need to correct anything in the future. This is rezoning, but not sending any type of inappropriate precedence. Actually, by recognizing and allowing a historic site to be more fully utilized, rezoning would actually be furthering the goals of the city's master plan. And as I mentioned, when you look at the consistency with the zoning classification of the surrounding land, directly north of the site is the Straight Farmhouse District, and it is currently zoned HS. So allowing that designation to have property adjacent to the south would be appropriate and consistent with our zoning pattern in the city. So in the end, the rezoning of the Oddfellows Hall will allow for this preservation of a site that has contributed to the city's history, and it will also allow the friends of the Straight Farmhouse to establish this site as a resource that can be used by city residents. So we do advise the Planning Commission to recommend council approve the proposed rezoning based on consistency with the zoning ordinance, compatibility of the HS characteristics with the surrounding uses, consistency with the goals and objectives of the master plan, the fact that it fosters the preservation of a historic site within the city. It creates a new recreational resource for city residents, and it's consistent with the zoning classification of the surrounding land. So with that, I will take any questions.
Okay, Mr. Ortega, I understand friends of Straight Farmhouse own the property that were during rezoning, and also they also own the Straight Farmhouse itself. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And they are a nonprofit organization?
That is correct. They actually are a nonprofit organization. Their resources are limited. And actually, working in concert with them, the city administration chose to create this as a city-initiated rezoning. Doesn't happen too often, but when it's something that furthers the interests of the city, usually we do this when we need to do a mass rezoning of or change of sites for new districts, but in this case, because of the historic nature of the site and working with the with the organization, it's a city-initiated rezoning.
Okay, thank you. Well, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to make a comment about the proposal? Would you indicate so by raising your hand? Again, this is for comments only. It's not a question and answer period. So if you would, if you're interested in making a comment, indicate so by raising your hand. Brian, do we have anyone?
I don't see any hands. Oh, I see one hand here. Let's go to Kim.
Okay, Kim, I believe you're muted, but there you go. Did you have a comment to make about the proposed rezoning?
I just wanted to thank the city for, you know, setting forth this and helping with rezoning. We're excited to move forward and to keep part of our history and our city in the district and continue to move forward. The Straight Farmhouse many years ago was the first one to approach the city to the historic district, and we're glad to be part of it again in the rezoning. Well, so like to thank all the hard work that went into it from everybody. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Brian, do we have anyone else?
I don't see any hands currently.
I'll ask one more time. Does anyone else wish to comment on the rezoning proposal?
Do not see any hands.
We. I'll close the meeting. Do we have any communications during the proposal?
I did not receive any written communications at my office. I don't know, Mario, if Mario received any?
No, we didn't receive any written communications in the building department or the community development department.
Okay, thank you. Well, we'll close the public hearing then at seven oh four. And move on to commission discussion and recommendations. We have any comments or discussion on on the rezoning proposal?
I have none.
Pretty much straightforward what we talked about, Fred. I don't have a problem with it. I think this is going to solidify the farmhouse and parking and for everybody's just going to make it better. I'm in favor of it.
Randy, did you have any comments?
No, no comments.
What we, would someone like make a motion? Or recommendation?
I'll make a motion to send us to city council that the the rezoning is approved, you know, for their approval and that I think this is again just going to help out the city and the efforts that these people are making over there, so.
I support.
Okay, motions made and supported to recommend approval to city council. Are there any comments on the motion? Would the secretary take the roll, please?
Commissioner Turnbull?
Hi.
Commissioner Mativier?
Hi.
Commissioner Kalitas?
Hi.
Chairperson may.
Hi. Okay, the recommendation on both items is for approval to the city council. Do we have other business? Before the commission tonight?
I have no other.
Uh, Dan?
Um, regarding, is this the time to talk about Checkers?
About Checkers?
Yeah, I got a question. I did go through the drive-through and their food is very good, but their exit, they have an entrance and they have an exit, but coming out of the exit, they have an arrow going in and going out. But there was cars going into the parking lot while people were trying to exit. It was so confusing. And I would like to go back to the, like, what the original plans were. I thought there was going to be one entrance way and one exit. They had arrows in the exit going in and out. It's very confusing, and I almost seen a couple accidents.
Mario, do you think you could come there and possibly work on some signage there?
Definitely, yes. I will look at that because I haven't driven on the site since the final C O V was issued, so I didn't know, I didn't see any of that those arrows, so I can definitely check and make sure if they're inconsistent with what we approved. I will let you know that a couple other things are different than what we approved. Most notably, there were the the wall at the rear of the site is originally supposed to be, they wanted to take it down and make it a low three-foot wall and have a second exit into the alley close to the dumpster enclosure. However, when they took down that wall, there was a, they say, there was a drastic grade change between the level of the site and the level of the driveway, of the alley. So then they just put the wall back up. I did notice that during the course of construction, they did a lot of excavation in that corner. I don't know if they were trying to find out if the soils were bad or something to that effect. But in the end, they put everything back to the way it was originally in that that corner of the site. But I just wanted to make you aware of that. So it does affect the circulation as we envisioned. And then secondly, they were supposed to add a curbed entrance at the other corner with the alley, because I don't know if you noticed, but when you go into that location, the curb cut on Merriman is very wide, so there is a lot of possibility for similar, what I would think would be similar traffic conflicts between cars entering, trying to go down eastbound in the alley, trying to go westbound in the alley, then just trying to make a shortcut to get into the driveway. So they they are going to be required to construct that curb once the sea construction season starts up again. But I just wanted to make you aware of that, those two different sites that are two different aspects of the site that are different than what we approved. But I will take a look at the arrows as well, because that's
Please do.
Another reason that makes it feel, I think it also is a problem with the the volume of the driveway, because sometimes I drive them through and it's like, it's pretty, it's stacked all the way to the back, almost into Ford Road. And I think some people are trying to compensate by having that the lineup swing around in front of the restaurant, but it's I think that leak directly contributes to the confusion, because people are entering where they should, when they're supposed to be exiting.
Yeah, the traffic flow there is not real great, that's for sure.
Yeah, so we'll see what we can do to try and fix it.
Thank you.
Okay. Randy, did you have any?
No, I have nothing.
Eric?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay.
Fred, if I may, I have a couple of things for you guys. One other thing, well, actually, it looks like first we have a ten, someone that has their hand raised, Kim.
But a Kim.
Kim, you have your hand raised?
No. Hi, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, everybody. When Commissioner Kalitas mentioned the drive-through at Checkers, it kind of made me think in along that same line, maybe if we can go back and check the plans for McDonald's, because that exit onto Ford Road is causing havoc like you could not believe. People are turning left out of there, and it was my understanding that it would be a no-left turn. The only place that is marked is on the ground as you're as you're pulling out of McDonald's, so, you know, nobody's going to see that. There's been a couple accidents, so Mario, I don't know if you remember or not, but if, you know, along the same line, if maybe we could go back and check those flight plans, because it was my understanding there would be no, excuse me, no-left turn, especially onto Ford Road, so see where we stand with that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we did talk about that a lot during the the planning of that. And I know we wanted to have signage there to prevent left turns. Probably just painting it on the the ground isn't going to be adequate. We need some some further signage there.
Yeah, right. As I recall, I thought they were supposed to have a sign there as well that says no-left turn. I know the curbs were designed, supposed to be designed to limit it, but I bet if I go out and check that curb right now, there's probably already a bunch of ruts on it, because people are driving over the curb, but making a left one is not supposed to. And then actually, similarly, with the Merriman Road, just let everyone know, the Merriman Road driveway, we've had some accidents in the driveway, because people are once again entering and off of Merriman into the site and attempting to pull right into the driveway and doing some kind of weird turn to get into front of the order kiosk, and they're not supposed to. And actually, so that, that was behind the request of the restaurant McDonald's, they want to put in a curb there as well to require people when they enter off of Merriman, they're not going to like it, but but to enter to drive parallel to the driveway lane, you go all the way around.
Yeah, yeah, it's designed when you enter off of Middle Belt to go all the way around the building to enter the drive-through lane, and people are probably trying to take a shortcut there.
Correct, yeah, Middle Belt, sorry about that confusion. It is Middle Belt. So I will look at that as well to make sure, because Wayne County is reviewing the Middle Belt new curbs, because that curb would be located in there right away. But I will check on the signage for the Ford Road.
Okay.
One other thing that I wanted to bring up, Fred, I don't know if you checked in your email, but the Shell gas station, they had some initial issues with their construction. They've dealt with some of the fuel storage issues with their underground tank, but then one other issue was the existing structure that they want to do the, basically do in addition to. existing structure that they want to do, basically do in addition to. It's actually a wooden roof structure, and the engineers say that in order for that to be in addition to the new square footage, it actually has to be a steel structure. So because of that, the applicant approached the administration, me and the administration to change the elevation. Their original elevation was made of stone lime, excuse me, cultured stone, limestone, brick, steel and, and can, and canopies. And then they had two peaked roof portions on east, on east and west elevation. Now they've provided a revised elevation where it's going to be proposed to be of brick and of split-faced concrete block. And right now, it's just gray. So before it was going to be a very, you know, very nice and attractive building. Now it's, it's not, not as much, so I technically
I don't think we can approve that while bringing it back before the commission.
Okay, so that, yeah, that was going to be my question to you, Fred, because I, because although technically, I, in theory, the administration could look at it and improve it, I didn't feel right in approving it administratively, so I, minimum, I wanted Fred's input. But Fred, if you feel the whole commission needs to look at it, and then that's what we'll do.
Yeah, I think it's more appropriate for us to do that, especially since they just want to have some of that block from the side.
Yeah.
And which is, we approved all.
No, it's not. I mean, there is a possibility to utilize split-faced block in a somewhat attractive way if you accent it enough. For example, if you use a course of limestone at the foundation to accent it, and then all, the applicant, the owner says he's willing to paint the, the concrete block, so he's willing to give the city full control over the colors. He's like, he says, so he'll use whatever color bricks and then whatever paint for the concrete block. So I know that's not a great compromise, but at least it's something. I think he's aware of the fact that he's significantly changing the building. And I know, since it's located in the DDA.
Let me ask the other commissioners what they think about allowing a change like that without bringing it back. Are you in favor of allowing it somewhat of a change with us just, just a couple of us looking at it? Uh.
I have no problem.
I'm sorry, Diane, what was your comment?
I said I have no problem with that.
Okay, Randy?
I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, that, that's no problem.
You're, you're okay with just having that done administratively, then?
Yeah, we can do that.
Well, actually, and one benefit we might have with our calendar is the fact that the DDA, it is located in the DDA. The DDA is meeting on Tuesday, so I see Kim's hand raised. But I do think it could be appropriate to, for the, the two different elevations to the DDA, so they can advise Fred on how they'd like to see it, what their opinion is on these changes and proposed improvements, because it is, it's okay, but it is a change from what we were proposing. It was going to be pretty nice, but I still think it will, it's going to be a drastic improvement, but I think if we had the DDA's input and then Fred sign off on it, I I would feel more comfortable myself if that happened.
And
Okay, Kim, what do you think about that? Are you still with us, Kim?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Yeah, that was actually why I raised my hand. I was going to ask, since we are meeting Tuesday morning, if it would be possible for Mario to get me the new site plans, the renderings, and I could present that to the board to get their opinion.
Yeah, I can definitely do that. Fred, if you're, do you think that's a good way to get, I think that, I think that's a good way to get more, more eyes on this and more ideas?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll do that.
Okay.
And then that's all I had.
All right. Well, I have nothing tonight. Cause by next meeting, I'll play with my computer and see if I can get a better connection. If there's no other business, then entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Supported.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Please adjourn. Thank you, everyone.